Just not now, I'd like to have the approval of the journal. The amendments in previous meeting have been distributed for review and we do have to have a motion to accept amendments.
Make the motion to correct the amendments?
Okay. Mr. Clay has got a motion to correct the amendments. And where might be that correction?
For audience participation, the comments made by Mrs. Tammy Eleanardo. It says in there that she said the city businesses are already taxed significantly. That should read that employment taxes are used to pay for city services and quality of life.
You need a second?
A second.
Ms. Corcoran? Thank you. Roll call please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Well, that motion has passed, now can we have a roll call on the approval of the amendments that have been amended. Make sure the motion, motion please, I think Mr. Clay makes a motion. Mr. Cole, second. Corcoran, roll call please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
All right, now it's time for reports from committees. Any committees want to make a report? Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. The Utilities Committee has one item on tonight's agenda, it's item number four, and it's the Second Reading of an Ordinance pertaining to the Business Banking Board membership. And all this does is add a member from the Ross County Health Department to the board that are voting member and we can work closely together. And it will go all through and next up, that's all right.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Yes, Mr. Florima?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. We have a safety service meeting on a proposal for parking, and there was quite positive reception by the business people as well as citizens that were there. They're still working a little bit on the language, and there should be a submission or consideration by council shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Florima. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Cole?
Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda, items five and six. Five is to appropriate funds received from the Patrick, Bethet, and so administrators between January 1st and 2016, and June 30th of 2016 into the city's insurance fund, accepting money into the insurance fund. Number six, appropriate $11,360.24 received by, as received as security as the result of a structure fire at the 81 Crossback Street. At this point, I will ask that we wait for approval on both of those, so that money should be moved to the square. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Engineering Committee has three items on tonight, all up for the third meeting. The first one has to do with the city guaranteeing the design fees, the estimate of the design fees for an extended sidewalk along Western Avenue. We've discussed this several times, and I think really this is something that going into the future, we really need to consider. Number two, item number two is consenting ODOT to propose a resurface, State Route 104 through the city limits, and that won't happen until 2019. Third reading on the, number three too, also was an ODOT proposal to resurface State Route 159, Bridge Street, that's from Main Street out to Marietta, and there was no date that I've got to report on as far as that goes, and that concludes my report. And now we go to reports from officials.
Ms. Patton, I had a question.
I'm sorry.
Was anyone from the Community Affairs Committee going to address the fact that the sample ordinance that was submitted by Mr. Cartier was not an ordinance or draft made for this city, that was only something for reference? And I wanted to make sure that, I know a lot of people in the audience may have gotten that and believed it to be something of a draft. It was submitted without any language saying draft, for example, and led people to believe that it was an actual ordinance being considered by the council at this time. And that is not the case, that's a fallacy, and I wanted to point that out. There's not been a committee meeting yet on that subject, and I wondered if anybody on that committee could speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
I'll answer Mr. Cole's statement or question. You pretty much did cover it. Saying is I the only person on the committee at this point who is present, you did cover and touch the point in sentiment exactly that this was only a draft and it was not actual language that was under consideration.
I think it should be made clear, though, that the request for the committee assignment does read, "Proposed Language Is Attached to This Email." This was "Proposed Language," and that's a matter of public record.
That's fine, but it's not, you know, the council will meet and decide. We don't allow other cities to dictate, you know, what we do. We will decide as our council, what legislation and what the wording we need to set.
And I think considering that Josh is not with us tonight, and he probably could clarify that a little more, I appreciate that you brought that up, Mr. Cole, and the other comments that we made, and it's not in stone, we're having a meeting August the 1st, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. And they've moved the meeting site to Western Avenue, to the Ross County site, so there'll be plenty of room for people to, you know, bring up the issue proposed upon.
And cooler temperatures.
Yeah, and air conditioning that works, that would really help. All right, back to reports from officials. Since the mayor's not here, do we have anybody to speak in his behalf? Do you have anything to say there?
Yeah, I would just like to say that administration supports item number one, and hope that would get favorable consideration, and also two and three. And then I would also just like to add that here in probably about two weeks, you're going to start seeing paving start again in the city for Phase Two of the paving project. So we would ask for the folks to remain patient and show some consideration as those people are trying to pave our roads and make a lot nicer floors. That's all I think.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Just a question, are we still online for the, as far as the park is concerned, with the bridge prepared?
Yes.
That should be upcoming draft?
Yes, that was, if I'm remembering correctly, that was going to be pushed back to August for a two or three week period.
Right, we were delayed by rain, so that's still upcoming?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to point out that Mayor Feeney's not here because he's in Philadelphia, and I hope everybody got to see him on TV. All my life, I don't think I've ever seen a mayor from our city speak at a national convention. I'm proud that Chillicothe was mentioned, that, you know, hopefully, you know, all the bad stuff that they've been broadcasting across the United States about Chillicothe, we've got a plus this time. All right, other, Ms. Van Nagel?
I'm just going to touch on number five, Patrick, government administration, what happens when people in the administration go on corporate insurance, they pay Patrick's, Patrick pays last, and we pay, yeah, so, so this is not a preparation of money, well, it is, but it's not asking for additional money, it's just appropriate money to proceed into incorporated, um, plan.
Thank you, Ms. Van Nagel. Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to still have something to address.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
Ms. Arnold?
Okay, all right, thanks. Couple things, I wanted to, again, probably repeat what Mr. Patton said about a mayor, I think it's phenomenal that he has provided for that, he did a very good job, and good representation of our city, and I wanted to, although I didn't know that we'd be here this evening, but I wanted to tell him what a good job he did, and congratulate him. The other thing I wanted to mention was the heat issue, hopefully we've got some legislation that's going to be rolling through pretty soon, the air conditioning.
It's up to the law directors that...
Okay, all right. The meeting postponed Monday, I'll tell you, I brought this nifty little thermometer tool over here that I use in my office to show people how much window tanning cools their houses and whatnot, and I took a reading here, the carpet's in here when I came over here that afternoon, were 98 degrees. The tables and the chairs were 99 and 100, back and forth, up around close to the ceiling, the ceiling area was 102. And with these two air conditions that we've got, I don't think we would have probably gotten much down, being close to 90. In fact, today I came over and turned on the air conditions about 5, give or take about 5 o'clock, and we're still in the 80s in here right now, so, and we're at the 90s when I turned the air on, we're still in the mid 80s, so it doesn't help, apologize for the heat. The air conditioning, I've turned off over here behind us, of course, basically a video audience, I guess the air conditioning running close to microphones over there, and I can see it here on my monitor, tend to has constant sound in here, and people at home were not hearing anything, they would hear the buzzes of the air conditioner, so, again, that's not, doesn't help anything, but I can turn it off so that hopefully the audio this evening will help. In order to keep things rolling smoothly, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Now it's time for audience participation. We have implemented a sign-in sheet, and Drew Stewie...
I have it up here.
Okay. For anybody that's wanting to address the council, your name and address needs to be on it, and you can come up to the microphone and speak. We also, you're limited by Council Rule Number 21, to five minutes per presentation, and a total of 15 minutes per subject. I will indicate when your one minute is remaining, and if anybody wants to add, be added to the list and speak after the fourth person or whatever, I guess we've got four people signed up tonight, then I'll let you go ahead and speak. So the first person is Diane Carne.
I'm going to pass right now.
You're going to pass?
Yes.
Oh, come on Diane, we want to hear from you. All right, H. Shawn Howard.
I'm passing this time.
Is it Diane Bell?
Dana.
Diane?
I pass as well.
Okay. Pass, Duke?
So far.
Oh, no, pass out, it's too hot in here. Ms. Nagel?
Yes, sir.
Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly.
I am Chris Mandold, resident of the city at 20 Club Drive. I'm here this evening in my capacity as CEO of the Economic Development Alliance of Southern Ohio, and I appreciate the clarification on the ordinance. This has nothing to do with the ordinance in question, and everything to do with some of the scurrilous and incorrect comments levied against my organization and Tammy Eleanardo, who happens to be chair of our board, by Reverend Terry Williams. And I think because you have been brought into this by a string of emails that have been copied to you, copied to you because of your participation and partnership in our organization, some clarifications are necessary. Number one, we don't accept these allegations, as we are tonight. There was a lot of heat and very little light from these comments that really did not relate to a major main topic at the time. We are really irritated in sense at the allegations put out against us by the Reverend Williams, simply because all I have to do is call you something, and it's up to you to prove that you're not. We choose not to address those allegations. I've found over 40 years plus of participation in local meetings like this in various capacities, that there tends to be a couple of things that you can count on when such allegations are purported and reported. Number one, the people who know you know better. Number two, the people who don't know you tend to either ignore it, or they will choose to believe it if they will, but that's unfortunate for them. However, we choose not to respond to these allegations on a point-by-point basis because that would only serve to give them credibility, which they don't deserve. What we have done, and what you should know, is that we have invited, last week, we invited Reverend Williams to visit with the Economic Development Alliance Board our next meeting on August 16th. We would very much like to hear his opinion on things, and this would be an excellent opportunity for him to talk to a respected cross-section of the business committee, all in the interest of dialogue on the issue. I would reiterate that offer publicly tonight for him to accept publicly if he chooses, or simply show up on August 16th, and we will be glad to talk with him in a calm and private and civil discourse. So that's the issue on the table. Mr. President Pro Tem, thank you, Your Honor, Pro Tem, and council members, I respectfully appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Nagel. Is there anybody else that wish, with which to comment tonight? Okay, please state your name and address, just briefly.
My name is Terry Williams, and I reside at 371 Flylanes Lane here in the city of Chillicothe. I'm pastor at Orchardville United Church of Christ, a congregation 183 years here in the city, and I'm here to speak about an act of vandalism. Let's see. This one? Come for that table, someone as well. Our congregation is a congregation of the United Church of Christ, which is the church of pilgrims. Our ancestors, 396 years ago, got on a boat on the other side of the pond, to the Atlantic Ocean. Got on a boat because we were not free to practice our religion where we were, we were forced into exile in Leyton Hollow, and knowing that we would not get any kind of fair treatment under the government in that nation, knowing that our children would be required to have our tax dollars paid for education, that we did not see fit to give them religiously and otherwise, our forbearers boarded the Mayflower. And as they boarded the Mayflower, Reverend John Robinson, who was their preacher at the time, had the following to say, he said, "I am persuaded, and it prevails upon me, that there is still more truth to break forth yet from God's holy word." That phrase is reflected in our denominational statement here today, nearly 400 years on, "God is still speaking." We have a theological conviction that we believe God is still speaking light and truth and holiness into the world, we believe that the way we've always done things doesn't have to be the way we always do them in the future. This theology has led us down many paths, it's led us to support women's ordination here in the United States, far before it was popular. First woman ordained in the United States, Antwa Brown, in a modern Christian denomination, was ordained in our denomination. Also, the first African American openly ordained, Lemuel Paines, ordained in our denomination. Also ordained in our denomination was the first openly gay man, Reverend Bill Johnson, in the 1970s. Our congregation in 1999, 17 years ago, elected to take a position as a congregation that we believe all people are of equal worth and dignity before God, and should be of equal worth and dignity in the church. We specifically included in that statement people who have different sexual orientations, different gender identities and different gender expressions, 17 years ago. This sign was put up for Pride Month on the front lawn of our church, first time the church decided to make such a public showing of our support. This sign showing not only our statement, a nod to the Reverend John Robinson and the pilgrims, but also a rainbow background to communicate our acceptance of a great deal of diversity, particularly diversity for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender persons. After coming here two weeks ago, on the 11th of July, and hearing the comments launched by Ms. Eleanardo about lesbian and gay persons in this community, I spoke before you, encouraging you to take this ordinance, this proposed language that had been put forward in a sample form, to take that ordinance under consideration in its intent, and I still consider that intent to be important. While we may disagree about the implementation, and I think there are good disagreements to be had, implementation can be fixed, conversation can be had, and we can create an ordinance that respects the intent of prohibiting discrimination without creating a climate that's bad for business. We believe this, I believe this, and that's what drove me to speak before you. The day afterwards, however, this is what we came to at the church. This sign that stands just a few feet from our building, this sign that stands all the way up into our churchyard, this sign, this sign was vandalized. Someone came with a knife, tried to take it down. Since they couldn't take it down, they cut out the message, and they gave us a clear message, we don't like that message here. This vandalism might be over a $200 sign, but it's a symbol, like any symbol in the church, that we acknowledge communicates something much more than the physical attribute. I would ask you to acknowledge tonight this act of vandalism as an act of discrimination in our community. It is an act of discrimination against my congregation, it's an act of discrimination against every person who holds these views, and every person is welcomed by this statement. We may disagree about how to implement all of these different things in this proposed ordinance, we might disagree about commissions, we might disagree about misdemeanors, we might disagree about quasi-judicial meanderings. The one thing we should not be able to disagree about, one thing, is that all people should be free of discrimination, my congregation approved. I hope more truth has yet to break forth from God's holy word and from this protestant symbolism.
Thank you, Pastor Terry. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Nancy Ames, House of 6219. Couple things, first of all, welcome, Matthew, it's awesome to have you back, and second of all, I am sorry to see that Mr. Cartier is not here tonight because the comments that I'm going to make pertain directly to an assignment that is received. I love to cook, sometimes I try new recipes. Each recipe has steps that you have to follow in order to have a good result. If I'm making cookies, I cream the butter and sugar first, then add the eggs, flavoring, and finely alter the flour and the liquids. If I follow these steps, I can be pretty sure that the cookies will turn out right, and my family and friends will like them. But if I decide to do this in reverse order, flour, liquids, then eggs, and finely butter and sugar, I can also be pretty sure that my cookies will not turn out right. I will end up with something, but it will not be a good cookie, and it would certainly not be something that I would be proud of or want to serve from a tray. Just like following a recipe in any organization, there are procedures that are followed and a certain sequence of actions to be followed. These establish and maintain order, keep all members informed, and get things accomplished with a good end result. In the case of City Council, the first step is to receive an assignment. The assignment is made by the council president to a committee chairman, and the chairman of the committee holds a meeting or meetings on the request. The committee considers different points of view, looks for precedent, while it formulates ideas, and finally suggested language is turned into the law director to be written and turned into an ordinance or a resolution. After that, the document goes before City Council for a vote. That's the process that City Council follows with legislation. During my time on City Council, numerous pieces of legislation followed this process with good results. Councilwoman Patrick headed the meth lab legislation. There were no proposed legislations or any proposed documents before the first meeting. She held meetings over a period of 12 months, bringing information and points of view for many people, elected officials from other jurisdictions, business owners, and the public in general. During the process, various drafts were submitted to the law director, who would organize the information in the correct format, and return the draft to the committee for further discussion. At the finish, Mrs. Patrick turned the findings in to the law director, who can host an ordinance. A public hearing was held, and the ordinance was voted on by City Council approved. By letting the committee be a part of the process from the start, there's ownership in the legislation. There's always discourse and disagreement, but the completed document is one in conclusion and consensus. Input from the public also builds support. Unfortunately, the process was not followed in regard to this non-discrimination legislation, and this has created problems. It has become divisive in our community. An article in the Gazette stated that Mayor Feeney and Councilman Cartier were working together to bring forth non-discrimination legislation. On June 29th, following that, Councilman Cartier requested President Arnold make a committee assignment. In that email, Councilman Cartier said, and I have a copy of the email, that it was "Proposed Legislation Was Attached." It didn't say sample, it says "Proposed Legislation." Later that day, Councilman Cartier sent another email saying that the proposed legislation was a joint effort of his and Mayor Feeney. The following day, June 30th, President Arnold made a request for the assignment. On July 11th, the City Council meeting, some residents raised concerns about the content of the proposed ordinance. On July 12th, the mayor spoke on the council board and said, "There hasn't been a committee meeting yet, there hasn't been, there's no proposed legislation at all, there's just a sample that Councilman Cartier attached." Unfortunately, this contradicts what Mr. Cartier said in his email on the 29th. The proposed ordinance is not a sample from another city, such as Athens, or New York, or Columbus. It is a document which Mr. Cartier said he and Mr. Feeney constructed, calling parts of ordinances from other cities. Finally, a date for the first committee meeting has been set for August 1st, a full month after the proposed legislation had been circulated and seen by many people. There's a correct process that should be followed. When things are done correctly, people have trust and confidence. But it was not followed here. Now there is distrust in the community. In an editorial in the Gazette, it was stated to let the process play out. That statement would be true and correct if the process were being followed from the start. Having proposed legislation before having an assignment this week, or a single committee meeting, is not called a correct process. Someone stated that he is confused as to why we have opposition forming to this ordinance before it's ever proposed in committee. Again, because the process was not followed, and a proposed ordinance was set out, opposition has come forth. The idea to have an ordinance, I'm sorry, the idea to have an ordinance submission to make people sure we were being treated fairly, has become divisive in the community. A document with the clause "to provide an inclusive and welcoming environment" has led to harassment and threats to individuals in Facebook, in emails, through employment, and even in mystery. All this before a single meeting was held. All this because the correct process was not followed, and all this didn't have to happen. The process for this assignment has been broken. Given the divisive atmosphere surrounding this document, I'm not sure that the latest proposal to use this as a base but to offer opinions on best language and enforcement mechanisms will create desired legislation. I suggest that the current proposed legislation be disparted, and a new document be generated by the entire committee, starting over using the correct process that reflects the input of the committee, of many people, of many points of view, and one that will truly make Chillicothe an inclusive and welcoming environment.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to go speak? State your name clearly and your address.
Well, do.
My name is Michael Brown. I live at 770 Madison Avenue. My council lady is Ms. Patrick. My council lady is Ms. Patrick and she's been super duper duper nice to me. So I'm not saying anything about anybody. I think this 516, if you're opening the door, then you're not going to be able to close. And where's all this money go? How's it going to be legislated and where does all this lead to? I mean, we got enough bureaucracy, more procedure, more bureaucracy. And I don't know all the bureaucracy here or procedure, but I think we have enough. So that's just another law that if you can enforce, you can enforce it. How are you going to enforce it? Not going to be able to. So that's going to be, you're going to have to hire a committee like you're already talking about. Then you're going to have to hire somebody to enforce it. What are you going to do after that? What comes next? If you can enforce it, what happens after that? Do you have an answer? I don't think there's that much discrimination in Chillicothe. I think Chillicothe's a friendly town and everybody gets along. And you opened your statements kind of with that. So, yeah. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mandold. Would anybody else like to speak on something else than the item we've been talking about? Okay, I see none. So old business, please. No old business? All right. Petition, sports, wobbles.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, I'm not going to delay this meeting any longer than necessary. I have nothing to report on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. New business?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, Mr. President.
Request that we excuse Councilperson Gray this evening.
Okay. Make a motion.
I make a motion to excuse Councilperson Gray.
Second. Motion. I need to vote on that. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else got, anybody got any new business to talk about? Yes, Ms. Patrick.
I guess we need to excuse Josh Carte.
Yes. I'll second. Motion was made to excuse Mr. Carte, Ms. Patrick. Patton, second. Roll call on the motion, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Okay, now, another new business to talk about? Ms. Patrick?
I would just like to make a request. It's a shame the mayor isn't here and Josh isn't here, but since procedure was not followed, I would respectfully ask that we just take this legislation as served.
Can you take a move on the question?
I would just ask that we've done correctly.
So reflected in or for the committee chair?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clay?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. The proposed ordinance submitted by Mr. Carte and the mayor has garnered a lot of attention. I'll try to be brief. It is getting warm and a lot has already been said tonight. But again, we've heard the statements time and time again that there's been no proposed in council, that people are jumping the gun, that they're acting prematurely, and the facts are that's just not true. As already stated, on June 27th, Mr. Carte sat here in council chambers and made a very public statement notifying council, the community, city leaders, and media of his intent to submit a committee assignment request to explore such an ordinance. When that came through on the 29th, again, the email stated proposed language is attached to this email. Council was therefore consented with proposed language, and the Gazette ran two articles on that proposed language submitted by Mr. Carte. Whether we wanted the public conversation to start at that point or not, it no longer matters. It became a public conversation. As the council member for the city's second board, it's my obligation to review and analyze any proposal before council so that I'm prepared for any meeting in which that's to be addressed and also so that I'm able to answer the questions from the residents who elected me to this seat, and that's what I've done. So I find it very disingenuous to then say that those who've spoken out or shared their concerns about this proposed language are acting prematurely. I've had the opportunity to speak with many residents and they're deeply concerned about the proposed language submitted by Mr. Carte and the mayor for our consideration. I appreciate the comments from Nancy Ames. This proposed ordinance did not follow our standard procedure and as a result, it's creating deep divisions within our community. At our last meeting, one resident spoke up to share her concerns. As a well-respected business leader in our community, her comments were thoughtful and respectable. She erred caution as we moved forward and provided a business perspective on why the proposed language might negatively impact local economic development. Since that meeting, she shared with the local business leadership forum her concerns. She provided them a copy of Mr. Carte's proposed language as well as a copy of the petition that's been circulated by certain opponents of this proposed ordinance. She asked recipients to read that document, both documents, in order to understand the situation, and then she asked them to simply form their own opinion. Since then, she's been targeted by vicious, she's been the target of vicious attacks that seek to undermine her credibility, to threaten her livelihood, and to destroy her reputation, which she has spent a lifetime building as a tireless servant of this community. She's been accused of hate speech, has been accused of promoting discrimination within our community, all because she dared to offer an opposing opinion of that which seems to be written into this language. I myself found that I was targeted with such language because of the comments I made at our last council meeting. I was told that I was feeding the violence that we already experience in this community, that if I continue to oppose this proposed language, that I personally bear responsibility for discriminatory acts of violence and crime, and that I should refrain from taking ill-advised action that emboldens violence in our community. There seems to be confusion as to why some who have read this might oppose the language that Mr. Carte and the mayor submitted to council. The treatments that Mrs. Ellenardo and myself have experienced over the last few weeks are prime examples as to why every citizen of Chillicothe should be concerned about the commission created within this language. Because if you offer an opinion that differs from that of someone else, you too might be accused of hate speech and spreading and promoting violence and crime and discrimination with our community. You might be subjected to the same systematic effort to destroy your reputation and your livelihood. And if brought before the commission in this proposed language, you risk being convicted of a misdemeanor, charged $500 a day until you comply with that commission's demands, and be ordered to pay your accusers legal fees and unspecified sums of money to compensate for humiliation and embarrassment and all other things deemed necessary by this commission, all without ever stepping foot inside of a courtroom. And then the commission has the legal authority to then publish the accusations against you, your name, and everything that they deem necessary publicly so that you suffer your own humiliation and embarrassment. Again, I invite all members of the community, regardless of your position on this proposal, to come out to the meetings and have your voices be heard. If you haven't read it, read the proposal and seek to understand. Ask the questions if you don't understand what's written in it, because this issue is too important for anyone in this community to sit on the sidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. All right. Committee assignments and meeting dates. Actually, you know what? I think I'll go along with Mr. Lawson. I feel sweat, you know, a little sweat going on here. All members of council got a list of the meetings. So I propose to change the rules tonight or the way you usually do it, and we are going with the legislation. Mr. Lawson?
Item one, third reading of a resolution supporting an appropriation for the estimated cost of design fees for a sidewalk extension project located on the northern side of Western Avenue from Hiley's Lane to University Drive and declaring emergency. Third reading.
Roll call, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Item one passed.
Item two, third reading of a resolution consenting to the proposal submitted by the Ohio Department of Transportation to resurface a portion of State Route 104 in fiscal year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Roll call, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Legislative pass.
Item three, third reading of a resolution consenting to the proposal submitted by the Ohio Department of Transportation to resurface a portion of State Route 159 and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Roll call, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Legislative pass.
Item four, second reading of an ordinance amending section 138.04A of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe. Second reading.
Okay, item one, please.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating funds received from Patrick Benefit Administrators between January 1, 2016 and June 30, 2016 into the city's insurance fund and declaring an emergency. First reading.
This time, I would like to request that you please waive the pre-read rule.
Roll call, please. Second, roll call. Oh, sorry. Second. Come in, Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Item six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating the sum of $11,360.24 received as security as a result of a structure fire at 81 Prospect Street, Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
This time, I would request that you please waive the pre-read rule.
Mr. Florima, second. Roll call, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Okay, this concludes council business this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Florima? Motion. Mr. Clay, second. Roll call, please. Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patton?